Good morning. Welcome to the Minnehaha Commission Meeting for September 16th, 2025. We will call our meeting to order and note that we do have a quorum of commissioners. Commissioner Benninga is absent. Silence your cell phone and please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Today, we have a couple of awards to give out. Last week, we had the annual convention for counties, county commissioners, elected officials, et cetera, in peer, and the Safety and Loss Control Recognition Awards were received by the auditor, thank you, Leah, on the county's behalf. The awards do emphasize the county's continued commitment to safety, but more importantly, honor our employees for their outstanding efforts at making the workplace safer and reducing liability exposures. I had a conversation with Brad Wilson, our work comp rep, and our work comp experience rate dropped by 10%, which is absolutely huge in the insurance world. So it's savings to the taxpayers and, more importantly, it means that we have a safe work environment and our employees are concerned about safety in the workplace. So we applied for and received the Gold Level Award, which is the 18th time that we received that, and we also earned the Platinum Level Award for maintaining a three-year loss ratio at less than 60%, so less than 60% of our premium that we paid went back to paying claims. Out of the 66 counties, only, I believe, 10 received that level, which is a significant achievement. I'm going to ask Maria to, she represents, is representing the Safety Committee for the county and received the awards for myself and Mr. Blainberg. So Maria, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. All right, moving on. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is bills that we pay, routine actions, that type of thing. Everything's available for public record down in the auditor's office. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on any item on our consent agenda? Commissioners, anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda. If anybody's going to comment on the regular agenda, we do have a sign-in back there. So if you are going to comment on any agenda item or during open public comment at the end, we do ask for your name for the record. First agenda item is a public hearing to consider a 2025-2020, it says 2056, but I imagine it should be 2026, retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, MAS LLC DBA Riviera Events and Catering. Good morning, Kim. I'm sure that wasn't your typo.
Yeah, it was my typo. Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Kirstenston with the auditor's office. We received annual license for '25 through '26 malt beverage, SD farm license from NMAS LLC doing business as Riviera Events and Catering. This would allow for the sale of malt beverages and SD farm wine at their establishment located in rural Minnehaha County. The application was sent to the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, and Planning Department for review, and there were no objections or concerns. The fee for this license is $300 with 150 being retained by the county and 150 going to the State Department of Revenue. You'll notice on the application, there are different dates. The original application received in late June and the license expires at the end of June. And then upon further review, the license was returned to the applicant to correct some errors on the application that we found in the review process. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody from the public that would, I don't know, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. So is the proponent here or anybody like to speak in favor of granting this license? Any opponents to granting this license? Okay. Commission, I'll turn it to you for questions and/or action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Go ahead and call the roll.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to accept and authorize the chair to sign the STOP P Grant Fund Subrecipient Agreement of the State of South Dakota Department of Public Safety, Office of Victim Services. Morning, Daniel.
Morning. Daniel Hager, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. Appreciate the opportunity to talk through, again, what is good news. This commission had authorized my office to apply for continued grant funding for one of our victim witnesses' assistance. We had initially applied for this back in 2023. It's been renewed. The past couple of times we've sought that, there is a 25% match, but with 75% of that funding, that enables my office to keep Kami Pfeifer. She's doing a really good job in that position. Some of this will be repeat from when. I'd asked for authorization to reapply for this, but in the past year, she'd worked over 300 of the more severe, high lethality cases coming through the office, has partnered with a deputy state's attorney in my office, sheriff's office, SFPD. They're meeting biweekly, has worked with a community response team to make sure that we are finding ways as a community to help victims as they navigate the criminal justice system, has worked on the ODARA lethality review assessment that individuals are completing when they're coming into contact with charges in the county. So that assessment is, a lot of information is being gathered about that person's history trying to determine if they're at risk, if they get released. So I guess that's the long-winded way of saying Kami's doing a lot of really good work. I appreciate DPS continuing to fund this position in the county. It's doing a lot of good work. So asking for support to accept that funding. Happy to answer any questions as well.
All right. Thank you, Daniel. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Commission, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any additional comments? Call the roll.
Kiple.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our briefing on the Minnehaha County Fiscal Year 2024 Audit. David Widler, the state gets to audit us once a year, or for a long time, every year, I guess.
Good morning. As mentioned, David Widler, South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit, here to give a briefing on the FY 2024 Fiscal and Compliance Audit. All of you have been provided a management letter, which is more of a formality in this case, as there is nothing that we determined was material enough that we found during the audit to bring to the attention of the board. Anything that we did find was communicated to the appropriate county official. Any adjustments that needed for the statements were posted and were communicated with Leah and Susan in the auditor's office. The audit was good. It's in its final form. It's been typed up and ready to be issued out in peer once I'm done here today. It's an unmodified opinion. Everyone here has been doing great work, from what I've noticed during the audit and my experience in previous audits with you guys. Is there any questions from anyone on the board or from the public?
All right. Thank you, David. If we would take public comment on the audit, first off, anybody from the public that would like to comment on our legislative audit? All right, turn it over to the commission. Questions? Mister, is it Widler or Wiedler? I think I said it wrong.
Widler, but it's okay. I'm used to it.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I can just ask a question for context. How do, how does Minnehaha County compare to the other 65 counties? Obviously, we're the biggest, but in your experience, I'm guessing you travel the state and see other issues. What are some of the pros and cons we have going for us in Minnehaha County?
I mostly stay here in the southeast corner. That's my designated area, but I have helped with pretty much every county up and down Minnehaha County reports on full gap. Most counties in the state, except for Pennington, report on cash basis. So with that, the statements reveal more information because you have to include your receivables, payables, capital assets, long-term debt. Those all go on the financial statements. Other than that, most counties, I don't really want to throw them under the bus, but you guys have the knowledge and experience in your staff to handle the problems before they become large problems.
That's why we have them. Additional comments? All right. This is a briefing. We appreciate your time and your work. Thank you, sir.
You are welcome.
All right. Consider a motion to declare sheriff's office vehicles as surplus for disposal by online auction and authorize the auditor to publish a notice of sale, Captain Bosman. Everybody's chance to buy a police vehicle, right?
That's right. Sales are hot. Come by. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. We have in front of you a request for six vehicles to be declared as surplus, and then also we will authorize the auditor's office to publish a notice of a public auction. We use Purple Wave as an online auction. This was utilized ever since the city of Sioux Falls in-person auction went away, and actually, we've had better results with an online auction. We have a larger audience. We can reach more people and we have buyers from a much larger geographic area, which increases the number of bids that we get on our vehicles. The vehicles that we have here today, some of them are patrol vehicles that have aged out, and when we get vehicles once a year, some might say, okay, well, if I've got $145,000, can I squeeze one more year? Well, the number of miles we put on each year, that 145 will be at 175, 180 next year. And that mileage range, we will see a lot of mechanical failures, and so this is kind of the time when we get rid of those. But maybe they still have some usage in a non-emergency or non-responder capacity. So we do also check with several other county departments to see if we can be a partner and utilize vehicles. I know we have in the past with Human Services, Safe Home or JDC utilized vehicles that still we can get some use for the county with there. With this round here, we do not have anything being transferred to any other departments. I will have three more vehicles that are coming off our line in the next couple of months. And so, again, we'll do that process, checking with other county departments, and then when we find the bottom of the bunch that we want to go to surplus, then I'll be back with the three.
Thank you, Captain. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on these surplus vehicles? Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Additional comments? Call the roll.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for final design and construction administration of project MC 2410, Structure 5242060, Bridge Replacement. Good morning, Jacob.
Good morning, Commission. Jacob Morris, Highway Department. The agreement that you have in front of you is to do final design for Structure 5242060. It's located four miles straight east of Baltic. That says west. It's actually east of Baltic. JEO completed a PE or a preliminary engineering design as part of a South Dakota big grant here earlier this year, and we are looking to fund the final design of this project to add a couple more points to our big score at the end of the year when we apply.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, turn it to you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Consider a motion to adopt a resolution for wheel tax distribution. Again, Jacob.
Earlier this year, we passed a new ordinance for wheel tax. This resolution updates an old resolution where we distribute the money that we receive from the ordinance. I'm proposing to keep the percentages the same, which would be 90% to the county, 5% to municipalities within the county, and 5% to townships within the county. Dollars and cents-wise, the increase that we are anticipated to see from the ordinance change would be roughly $190,000 for the county and $10,500 to the townships, $10,500 to the municipalities.
Public comment on this agenda item? Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, with just a question, if I could.
Please.
Is this something we do because of the change or is this an annual thing?
This is something we do because of the change. This resolution is required to distribute the funding from the wheel tax ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't remember this before, so give me those numbers again, the dollar numbers.
Yep. So we increased the wheel tax, a dollar a wheel for vehicles over 6,000 pounds, and that results in a total increase of roughly $211,000. And then that has to be distributed amongst the county, the municipalities, and the townships. So the county gets roughly $190,000, and then the townships and the municipalities each get $10,500.
How's that split out?
How is it split up between the municipalities?
Yeah, the townships, yeah. It's such a small slice.
I would have to ask Chris how that's split up. I'm not sure if it's split up per population or if everybody gets an equal share.
Okay, okay. Interesting. So we were doing it the same percentage before on the old wheel tax, so is this statutorily required or? It is. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, this is the first time we've done this in how many years?
Since 1995.
That's why we don't remember it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Benninga probably to remember, but I don't. I'm sorry, I shouldn't poke fun at him when he's not here. All right.
Just one quick clarifying question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
When you say it's statutorily required, Jacob, is it that the percentages are statutorily required or the fact that we have to determine the percentages?
That we have to distribute it, we have to decide how it's distributed amongst the different organizations in the county.
So theoretically, we could keep 80% of the county and 10% of the other two entities?
Could, yep.
Has there been any discussion about that in the past of making changes or?
In, I don't know previously if it had been discussed what the percentage was, but I'm proposing just to keep it the same.
Yeah, I would agree with you as well.
And just for clarity, Jacob, I mean, they're still getting the other 5% of the, I mean, they're getting 5% of the total. This is just the new. So, and what is our total wheel tax? Six million?
Roughly four.
Four million?
Right around $4 million.
So, I mean, yeah, it's a bigger pie, definitely. All righty.
Could I ask one more question just to clarify also? And maybe, maybe I need to ask someone else if you don't know, that's okay, but I was just curious if the other funds that we allocate to counties and municipalities, those aren't impacted by this in any way?
They're not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Call the roll.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize commission administrative officer to sign the participation and release form for new national opioid settlement, Purdue. Morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. We have two settlements that we'll be going through. The first one that we would like to have for your consideration is for, to authorize Tom Greco, our commission administrative officer, to sign the participation and release form for the Purdue settlement. We recently became aware of this new settlement that we are eligible to participate in. The exact amount of the settlement is unknown. It really depends upon the number of people participating. But if we do participate, any funds received will go into our opioid settlement fund that we are required to use in accordance with that agreement that we signed a few years ago. Currently, the commission has authorized us to use those funds to help our, pay for our funding to the link. And just also, just for full disclosure, that, you know, by accepting or authorizing us to participate in the settlement, that, you know, we do release Purdue from any options for other claims in order to participate in the settlement. So that's just a part of that. So we would just ask for your consideration to authorize us to accept that, to participate in the settlement.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize commission administrative officer to sign the participation and release form for new national opioid settlement secondary manufacturers.
Yes, today we are asking for your authorization to allow Minnehaha County to participate in the opioid settlement for the secondary manufacturers. There are eight different manufacturers that are included in this settlement. Same conversation as before, by participating in this settlement, any funds received will be received in the opioid settlement fund that will have to be used in accordance with that contract, and currently is used for the funding for the link. And then for your consideration, Tom, we would ask that Tom Greco be authorized to electronically sign the participation and release form.
All right. Public comment? Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Last agenda item, Fiscal Year 2026 Final Budget Briefing. Is this the final, final budget briefing?
You'll see me next week, too, but this is the final briefing. Susan Beeman with the auditor's office again. So we wanted to run through the final changes that we have made to the budget after last, two weeks ago, we had the public hearing, and so this is a continuation of those conversations of those adjustments. When we met two weeks ago, we did not have the final numbers for the utility, the centrally assessed utilities, so that's changed property tax revenue very slightly. And so we wanted to run through those with you today. I'm going to just scroll down into the presentation so you can see those changes. So the lines in yellow are the changes that you'll see. So the, after we brought those centrally assessed utilities into the general fund, we're increasing property tax revenue by $9,224. Also, within the general fund, per year requests, two weeks ago, we increased the budget for the link, so $100,000 would be budgeted additionally in the general fund. As we move forward into the next slide, you can see the centrally assessed utility values for building fund, library fund, and fire fund are all very small, $759, $154, and $151. And then as we do apportion out the fire fund to the real fire departments, you'll see an increase in the expenses accordingly for the $151. And then lastly, the other change that was made is that additional $100,000 in the opioid settlement fund for that additional $100,000 to increase the link funding to $600,000 in the budget. So those are the changes that are now included in the budget for 2026. So I'll just pause there to see if there's questions before I continue.
All right.
Okay. So next is just the means of finance. This is the version you've seen in prior, prior meetings, with the detailed revenue and then appropriations are listed on the bottom. So general fund here is just under, or just over $12.1 million in cash applied. Total appropriations for all funds are right around $132.6 million before inter-fund transfers. So cash applied across all funds are just around $10.7 million. So as we move into this format, it's the same thing as what you saw before, but this is the format you'll see next week because that'll be officially part of the budget package. But what's different here is you'll see the detailed budget by department. Otherwise, all of that is just, it's a little bit more detailed than what you saw in the previous version. So pause there if you have any questions on any of the details as we talk through the budget. You know, as, just to remind you, public safety and justice still is a major component of our general fund at roughly 71% of our general fund, or $68.6 million is public safety and justice costs out of the total appropriations of 96 million. And then since we're at the point that we can have a better final number for levies, we wanted to show you the combined levy information for the general fund, the building fund, and the bond redemption fund. Those are the three county funds that get assessed to all Minnehaha County taxpayers. And so this year, our levy is decreased from the prior year. We're down to $2.933 for those three funds. So just because a levy goes down does not necessarily mean people's taxes are going down because that's a correlation between the value of the property and such. But partly what causes and drives the levies to go down are those market value increases.
And this includes the opt-outs, correct?
It does include the opt-outs, or were no opt-outs levied in 2025. So as we go down into this version, this just kind of gives you a better idea of an impact on a home of $300,000. We shared this slide very early in the budget process, probably three months ago now. So as we go through this slide, I'll just walk through it. So this first column is our property tax revenue budget, so $77.38 million. Abstract values is just over, just under $26.4 billion. That's an increase from the $25.1 billion that was last year. So when you calculate that levy, this is where you can see the levy to $2.933 for those three funds. So if a home that was $300,000 last year received the average increase of 4.8% for a market value change, for those three funds, their tax would go up $31.14. So that $300,000 home is now $314,400 with that 4.8 market value change. And so once you factor in the new levy, that levy would create an increase in taxes of $31.14 from the prior year. So with this budget, that does include a 3% growth and a 2.9% CPI in the property tax revenue budget. So initially, when we did the preliminary budget, we had growth at 2.98%. It's now 3% where we ended up final. Any questions?
Do you want to do public comment first?
Yeah, we'll take comment first. I didn't know if you were at the end.
I am at the, at the end.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we'll take public comment on the, on the budget briefing. There is no action on the briefing. It's just a briefing today. But we do take comments. Action will be next week. All right. Commission, any questions for Susan?
Yes, I was just gonna, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the, this chart here kind of helps us at that micro at the household level. All of the, all these numbers flow in, but what does it mean for me type of a thing? And the two biggest variables in this algebraic equation are the, the value of my home multiplied by the levy rate. So this, we know that both those numbers are moving, they're not static. So the fact that there's an increase on average in the value of our homes, that's factored into this, and so we're not just claiming credit for driving down the rate. We know that rate, we know that there's other variables that are moving in this, so, yes, the, uh, the val- the value of the average home is increasing, but our levy rate was slightly decreasing, so we, it's good to see the net effect of that on the micro level. To pivot just a little bit to the macro level, when we're macro budget planning, uh, in the out-years, I think we've built a pretty good culture at Minnehaha County of having a, a five-year outlook, uh, to know, uh, what we're trending. Um, I would just maybe highlight a couple of the, the macro variables. At some point, we can't do this much cash applied each year, and we recognize that, this is probably the last year, uh, where our main tool in our toolkit here was using reserves, and now, I think we're back to reality from kinda the ARPA wave of cash, uh, so we chose to use a lot of reserves here. Um, so, so having a, a clear reserve policy going forward, I think we have that, and I think we have a good five-year projection for that. Another, almost quasi-reserve that we're sitting on, that I think we're gonna need to use this next year to have a little bit of strategy upon, and I can maybe frame this in a form of a question to, uh, engage Susan here, but, um, we did opt-out for taxing capacity, we did not levy any of that this year, but what, what is our opt-out capacity right now?
Uh.
Is it, I, I wanna say it's about six million?
I believe it's a little over six million, I think it is, um, six point one or six point two million. I think we had four point six six, four point six two two prior to the one point five that we passed this year, so I think it's just over six point one.
And so I would just kinda socialize and introduce the concept to my colleagues that much as we have a reserve capacity, and we, we spend down that reserve to a pl- a new plateau, uh, you know, I think we shoot for twenty-five percent is our reserve policy, is that correct, Susan?
Correct.
We're also sitting on six million dollars of opt-out capacity, and a lot of our theory in the macro budgeting is to layer things in, we wouldn't want to levy all of that in one year, even though we would have the legal capacity to do so, much like we'd have the legal capacity to spend down all of our reserves. So I kinda wanna frame the idea of some of this opt-out capacity as another form of a reserve, and when do we tap into it, and strategically, how do we tap into it? Uh, do we, uh, layer it in, in small amounts, because many people are paying their mortgages and, uh, need that layered in slowly, rather than waiting until we absolutely need it, and then levying like a six million dollar increase all at once? So I think those are gonna be the sum of the discussions going into twenty twenty-six for the twenty twenty-seven budget, but I'm very happy with the way this one turned out. I think, again, Minnehaha County is the example to our friends at the state of how local government should work and how we can responsibly govern. Uh, when you look at this levy rate, our reserve policy, I just think we're doing things right here, and if, uh, some of our friends at the state would come spend some time with us, I think they'd have a much better understanding of the property tax system, uh, at, again, that micro level of an individual household, how we appraise the value of a house, or any type of property, and they'd have a vision of a macro policy of, of things like reserves and our bonding, our debt, how we're managing all of that, so. Appreciate all the work Susan put into this and my colleagues, I think it's another successful budget year, so that's my comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, if I could add to Commissioner Kipli's comments, um, Susan, to bring attention back to a statement you made, and I'm gonna paraphrase, but you said something like, um, if the levy goes down, it doesn't necessarily mean that the tax bill goes down, and as Commissioner Kipli stated, that is, uh, uh, you know, variables depending on valuations and things like that, but I also wanna just highlight that that's the importance of this process that we're concluding right now. The budget is what ultimately controls, and, um, I just wanna highlight the work that our staff and our department heads do all year, um, to be frugal and to be conscientious of the dollars that we're spending. Um, I can just give you so many examples of department heads and elected officials who I speak with, who are continuously working to save money. Um, I just wanted to highlight that and just point out that, um, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes when we get to this point, sometimes we've looked at it so many times that we, uh, are, are ready to move, and I just wanna make sure that the public is aware that we spend a significant amount of time behind the scenes, making sure that we're being responsible with these funds. That's all.
Commissioner Heisey?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, I would also echo those comments, um, by Commissioner, uh, Blainberg, there's, um, certainly a lot of, uh, time that goes in behind the scenes and keeping down expenses and making cuts where necessary. Um, but I do wanna ask, uh, Susan, if you could speak to the opiate fund, the adult opioid settlement fund, excuse me?
Yep.
And just for the, the public good and the knowledge of the public, um, what impact that has on our budget and how those monies are used?
So, um, the opioid settlement dollars, um, let's see, when we, um, we initially, um, signed an agreement, um, with the state of South Dakota back in October of twenty twenty-two. Um, so, um, we entered in and, and said we wanted to participate with those, um, that settlement, and so dollars started flowing to Minnehaha County in twenty twenty-two. Um, they will continue to flow in various dollar amounts, um, for, um, with the ones that we had previously opted into, not the two new ones from today through twenty thirty-eight. They do taper off, so we won't have the same volume of opioid settlement funds, um, for the duration of that time, they will, they will go down. Um, as, um, those dollars are required to be used in accordance with, with the contract that the state has, um, with the state, um, that we signed with the state. Um, it's like an eight or nine-page agreement, so there's a lot of different options on how, uh, Minnehaha County can, um, elect to use those funds. Um, to date, we've used it to help fund our contribution for the link. So, um, the funding, um, for the link existed prior to the opioid settlement, um, funds, and so those were being covered with general fund dollars prior to the opioid settlements coming in, so, um, this has allowed, the settlements coming in has allowed us to shift some of that burden from the budget, from the general fund, over to the opioid settlement dollars, to help, um, use those dollars to, to fulfill the obligations with the agreement with the state, but also, um, not use quite as much general fund or property tax dollars to help pay for those commitments.
And I, I, I suppose, longer term, you know, given the fact that the settlement funds aren't guaranteed, we don't know how much we're gonna receive on a annual basis year after year, we can kind of, you know, as the years go by, determine how much we want to allocate to the link or any other project with those funds.
I'm gonna take that in probably two parts, um, so, the opioid settlement dollars, we do have a general idea of how much those dollars will be for settlements that have been already agreed upon or have been, are already flowing. Um, now, are there things that could happen on the trustee's side that maybe would change those dollar amounts? I would say probably yes. Um, but we have estimates that we, that we have, that we are kinda planning for coming in, knowing that it could always change. As far as the commitment and the expenses to the link, um, that would barely be a separate piece of that. Um, those, uh, um, dollars that flow to the link are, um, decided by the Board of Commissioners, um, and so, increasing or decreasing those contributions would be in that agreement that the Commission has authorized. Um, to, um, to date, the current agreement goes through, I believe, twenty twenty-six, um, um, and that agreement currently has four hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Um, couple things, about what, seventy percent of our budget is for personnel?
Uh, roughly, yes.
Okay, close number. Um, and I don't wanna cause a rush on the Auditor's Office, but I want people to understand that, you know, this thirty-one dollars is just the county's bite at the apple, I mean, uh, as far as an increase goes, you got your municipalities, you got your school districts, and the Auditor's Office has a worksheet, I don't know if it's available online or not, so you could, is it?
Uh, it's not yet, mainly because all of the taxing jurisdictions are doing the same thing we're doing, which is finalizing budgets, so those, the levy informations for those other taxing districts are not available yet. Now, by end of the year, early next year, it would be on our website, um, so they would be able to go and pull the levy information and pull out the different levies for, um, where they live, or things like that.
There's thirteen school districts in Minnehaha County, I believe is the number, I mean, i- it's a great worksheet for, if somebody wants to understand where their tax dollar is actually going to, the library fund, the school district, the municipality that they live in, the county, it really breaks it down, and you can plug your home value in there and, um, have a very good idea of what your taxes are gonna be. Um, it's, I keep a copy of it just to kinda track what's going on for the last eight years, and I, I find it a valuable little tool to use, basically, so. Encourage people that if they really wanna know, and I'm not gonna call it the weeds, cause it's a single page and you just plug a few numbers in, and it, it's amazing, um, to see where those dollars are going, so, um, just a suggestion. And again, not to cause a run on the Auditor's Office for, request for worksheets, but I, it is a valuable thing, and it'd be nice to see it published, you know, just for, well, it is published, I guess, but for people to have it available. All right, budget briefing is over. Thank you, Susan, look forward to next week. Now we are at the opportunity for public comment, we give thirty minutes, five minutes for any one individual. Anybody like to address the Commission about any non-agenda item? All right, moving on to liaison reports.
I can get us-
Commissioner, please.
Sure, I can get us started. Um, just a couple things, we haven't met in a while, last time I was at the Juvenile Detention Center, the JJC Building Project is, um, coming along really well, phase one looks, um, to be moving along as intended, and, and it's just fun to go and see all of the last-minute things, the final pieces that are being added and things are getting done, it looks great. Um, the, Jamie Gravitt, the Director, will be offering tours later this month, I believe, to, um, area stakeholders, so if you're a stakeholder and would like to get a tour, make sure you reach out to him or me. Um, I also had the opportunity to visit the Family Visitation Center, which provides such a valuable service in our community, um, and received some of our Domestic Violence Fund dollars. Um, Carol and Jolene were gracious enough to let me kind of do a little, um, work shadow, so I, I was able to observe the work that they're doing, and, um, it was, it was very impactful to see the number of people that benefit from that, and it kinda flies under the radar, you don't really know they're there, and all the work that they're doing for the kids that are in difficult situations in our county and area, actually. Um, and then we also had the NCSL visit last week, I believe that was, um, with area legislators that came from around the county, or from around the country, and some from our area attended also. They had a chance to tour, um, some of our community partners, they had a chance to hear from local leaders, including our own Carrie Benz, um, and Logan Penfield from the city, and Larissa from Sioux Falls Housing, that was the session I sat in on, excellent dialogue and questions, um, as really we showcased the work that we've done in this community. Um, and then I also, guessing other Commissioners may wanna comment on the conference in peer, uh, it was very well put on, great, um, presentations, the main subjects that I really, uh, deepened my knowledge about were TIFs and liens, so thank you to the presenters on those, and also employee engagement was a really good one. I think that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Guess I can chime in, and, um, a number of us Commissioners went to the, uh, State Associations Conference and Peer this last, or last week, and, um, great to connect with other Commissioners from across the state, share ideas, um, we were able to attend, at least in my case, um, a pre- a couple presentations on, um, the nature of TIFs, um, then also liens, and that is something I like to, uh, work on over the course of this year, is , uh, making our, uh, lean process, um, more efficient and, um, bringing more revenue to the state, um, or to county, excuse me. Um, I think that's about it, so.
All right. Yeah, last week, the state convention definitely was worth the time and effort to get there, the TIFs have been mentioned, um, you know, it's, uh, just an interesting discussion at the broad, um, array of feelings towards TIFs, especially from the county level, I personally am a big supporter of TIFs, and I see them from an economic development perspective, that it's one of the very few tools in the, um, quiver of economic development items that we have, and, um, I huge supporter of it, and it's, I think, more information and more knowledge of about, um, tax increment financing is important, so I'm glad they did that little presentation, um, you know, as some of it too about the internal workings, you know, when a TIF is completed, whose job is it to notify, and that type of thing, interesting discussion. I'm also attended one by Chris Nelson, Public Utilities Commission, we talked about how the PUC and CUPs, um, all interact, and how the, um, I definitely picked up a few things about the actions of the Commission, and how the, uh, Public Utilities Commission looks at our conditional use permits, um, so, a lot of CUs and PU's, but it was good information. Um, Rhodes, we had Chief Justice Jensen speak at lunch, it was a very, um, interesting, um, two days, so very well worth the time to go, and I appreciate being out there with several hundred other county commissioners and auditors and treasurers and registers of deeds, and highway superintendents, and various other people, so, great convention. That's all I got. We have now non-action Commission discussion. All right, no executive sessions, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.